All right, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, November, uh, excuse me, October 28th, meeting of the Aurora Grande City Council. Could we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lowe?
Here.
Councilmember Maravelia?
Here.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Here.
Mayor Ray Russum?
Here. And would you please silently join me in a moment of reflection? Thank you. And would you please join me in the flag salute? I skipped right over the roll call, didn't I?
No, we did it.
I did it? Wow, that was fast. Okay. Item five, agenda review. Does anyone have anything they need to pull or have done for separate consideration? Okay, then we will proceed as published. We have no closed session announcements, and so for 5B, I will move that all ordinance presented at the meeting shall be read in title only, and all further readings be waived.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries four zero. It takes us straight into the fun stuff. Special presentations. So the first one is our honorary proclamation recognizing November 2025 as National Native American and Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month, and with slogan "Meet Me at the Podium." Good evening. This is an honorary proclamation recognizing November 2025 as National Native American and Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month. Whereas National Native American Heritage Month is also referred to as Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month, and is a time to recognize the history and experiences of indigenous peoples in the United States, and to rejoice in the diverse and rich cultures and great contributions of indigenous people and tribes. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National Native American Heritage Month. And whereas National Native American and Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month allows us to spread awareness about indigenous people and tribes, and to educate people about the various challenges faced by indigenous peoples in the past and today. And whereas indigenous peoples play a great, a polit- excuse me, a critical role in the health and vitality of our great nation. As leaders, advocates, business owners, artists, teachers, writers, courageous members of our armed forces, and so much more, their contributions to our society are cause for celebration and appreciation by all Americans. And whereas the city of Aurora Grande resolves to work side by side with indigenous peoples and tribes to secure stronger, safer communities, and safeguard sacred heritage for future generations. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Karen Ray Russum, mayor of the city of Aurora Grande, to hereby proclaim November 2025 as National Native American and Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month in Aurora Grande, and urge our community to observe this month with gratitude and sensitivity with the use of appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And I'll leave it to you to have a few comments.
I want to thank everybody that made this possible, and we appreciate what we do to help you people out, and what we teach, and teach our kids to respect everybody. And that's the way it should be. And I, like I say again, thanks to everybody for making this happen. Thank you.
All right. Item 6B is a mayor's commendation presented to Lisa Calamura. So if you would also meet me at the podium? And I will give Councilmember Lowe full credit for bringing this to the attention of the council and making sure that we took the time to honor you as you richly deserve. This is a mayor's commendation presented to you, in recognition of being one of five to receive the 2025 Congressional Woman of the Year Award for your outstanding contributions to education, equity, and empowerment on the Central Coast. For more than 27 years, you have inspired students at California Polytechnic State University, San Luis Obispo. Through your teaching in the Department of Communication, you've helped countless students find their voices, build confidence, and develop the skills to express themselves with purpose and authenticity. Your leadership as president of the Executive Board of the Cal Poly Chapter of the California Faculty Association demonstrates your unwavering commitment to fairness, equity, and respect for your colleagues. You have also empowered others, encouraging women of color, faculty, and students to speak up, lead boldly, and embrace their worth. Your authenticity, compassion, and strength have inspired so many across the Cal Poly campus throughout Aurora Grande and across the Central Coast. This recognition is a true reflection of your dedication, leadership, and positive impact on our community and beyond. The city of Aurora Grande congratulates you for all that you do to uplift others, strengthen our community, and make a lasting difference. We'd love to tell, have you tell us more.
I'm truly honored by this. Thank you, Eileen, and all of you, Jamie and Mayor Russum, and Councilmember Guthrie for supporting this and making this possible. The work that I do is in appreciation of those that have come before me and those that I continue to serve even after I retire in a year and a half. So I'm very happy to do this, and hopefully I can continue my work even after I retire. Thank you.
And next, item 6C. This is City Manager Communications that's being presented by Assistant City Manager and Public Works Director, Bill Rubison. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor. All right, we have a few things. I'll start off with a notice of detour that applies to the Halloween in the Village. And obviously, Halloween in the Village is Friday, October 31st. Cheers Aurora Grande is putting that on. And we are changing the detour and the closures of the streets because of the Trafficway Bridge Project. And the special event hours for this Halloween in the Village will be 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock. Normally, it's 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock. And for the safety of the participants, Public Works will be implementing, and police will be implementing special traffic control measures. East Branch will be closed to vehicle traffic, and you can see the graphic up on the screen. From 4:30 to 6:30, so the closures will start at 4:30, and we will have everything back open about 6:30 on Halloween once again. The intersections and major driveways on the East Branch Street, including Short Street, the Car Corral, Nevada Street will also be closed to vehicular traffic. The closures will be hard, meaning closures reinforced with barricades to make sure that we have the most safety for our children who will be walking throughout the village. So drivers are encouraged to use detour routes around the village from 4:30 to 6:30, which include Bridge Street, Nelson Street, and Mason Street. And you can see a detour enclosure map on our website. To move on to Community Service Grant Program. Applications for this program, the Community Service Grant Program are available on the city's website, and we will be accepted until the 4th of December, and closes at 5:00 o'clock that day. So applications are going to start coming in now. And to be eligible for a grant, an organization must operate as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and directly provide programs or social services to the Aurora Grande community. For more information about the grant program, if you'd like more, visit our website. And our Community Development Manager, Andrew Perez, is the staff person to contact. He's also on our website. Hazardous fuel reduction work. We've been getting a lot of calls and emails about the work that's being done at three locations. We've been working on the James Way location so far, but this is a project that's grant funded through the Slow County Community Fire Safe Council. It's a wildlife, or wildfire mitigation effort that began on October 15th in our James Way open space. And what it is, is the creation of defensible space, improving emergency ingress and egress, and reducing flammable and dead vegetation in these areas. And I'll talk about the other two areas. The James Way open space area has been completed. Similar work is being done in the Miller Way via La Varanca area, and that is expected to be completed at the end of this week. The next and last area is Old Ranch Road, Mercedes Lane. It's the county piece of property that's next to the library. The city has an agreement, a maintenance agreement with the county to do the vegetation maintenance there. So we'll be moving on to that one, and that should be done in about a week and a half or so. Lastly, from our HR department, our Human Resources Department, Public Works is recruiting for a Public Works manager to oversee operations in the divisions of streets, parks, and landscaping, building maintenance, and the Soto Sports Complex. The deadline for applying for that position is November 7th. And then lastly, our fire authority is also conducting a chief interview panel, a chief interview panel this week for our firefighter recruitment. So that concludes my updates, and I can answer any questions you have.
I just have a quick one. Can you add one more in there and tell us about what's happening with our Parks and Rec Department?
What's happening with our Parks and Recs Department?
Uh, let me see. We just sent out a press release about being nominated for the best of the Central Coast.
Yes, I, I just got that.
So did I, so don't blame him.
So yeah, Sheridan just sent me this, our Parks Director. And I have to kind of read it, but sure, yeah.
I can jump in as we did the press release.
Thank you.
So yes, our Recreation Services Department was nominated for two categories for the Tribune's Best of the Central Coast, in the category of education, summer camps, and then also best place to work. So the voting just started yesterday, and it goes through November 14th. And you can vote once every single day until it closes, so that we win. So please do.
So if we say vote early, vote often, we're not encouraging anyone to vote illegally, so that's good. So yeah, if you have it in your heart to, to honor our Parks and Rec Department, please do. All right. That takes us now, I navigated away, please forgive me. That takes us to our city council reports. This is where we report out once a month about the other committees that we sit on. For myself, the Audit Committee has not met. CJPIA has not met. The Five Cities Fire Authority did meet, but I'm going to leave that to Board Member and temporary chair that day, Councilmember Maravelia. The San Luis Obispo County Mayor's meeting was attended on my behalf by Mayor Protem Seacrest, who is not here this evening, so she'll report out on that next time. Sanitation District has met, and get that open. And we received and final, and filed the final redundancy project final report. So that is very exciting that that's up and running. And we have some project management that we also extended with regard to the continued standing up and getting that all ready to be, I guess, operational. It is operational, but more management that goes with that, and also for a condition assessment project that's going to be going forward coming soon. So that was it on that one. And I will, oops, I will turn it over to, Mayor Protem is not here, so Councilmember Guthrie.
Well, I will have a similar report. So Central Coast Community Energy has not met since our last meeting. Integrated Waste Management has also not met, and I'm not sure whether Reach met yet, or, and maybe, that's still coming, okay. One that I will not be attending. But I did thought I would take this opportunity to report on having gone to the League of Cities meeting, as did several others. Really great meeting. I've been to a few of these, and in particular, this one had a lot of useful, useful sessions. Two in particular, one that I didn't really plan to attend, but turned out that I didn't have anything else going on there. So I attended one on parking, which actually proved to be quite interesting. It's not something that's super pressing, but it was put on by Seal Beach, and then a consultant who was actually consulted with San Luis Obispo. His name, I, a couple of takeaways there. One is the, you know, the street parking and surface parking that we often treat as equivalent, or really not. They made a pretty good case for why street parking is something to watch first, and separately, and maybe need to manage earlier. There's no free parking pay, there's no free parking, and in particular, that every time that a parking space turns over, it adds value. So they, we're kind of showing how, if you say, let's say have a turnover every two hours, then that's far more valuable to both the community and to the, to the city, and because there's that many more transactions taking place. They also pointed out that once you hit 85%, you need to start managing.
Eighty-five percent of what?
Of capacity. So when you have 15% vacancy, I'll say it the other way around, then, then you, you should be starting to manage it, manage whatever piece of your parking at that point, which I, I was a little surprised at that. I mean, I realized we do these studies, and we always find a space and go, well, the space isn't used up. But their, their point is that once you reach that point, you start actually having people who do not come to the area because they at least feel like it's, it's not available. I also attended one, a small city seminar, which they were, well, seminar is not the right word, but anyway, they were talking about for small cities, and they're defining small cities, by the way, as 35,000. Seems like a lot to me, but that happens to get them into about the 50% of the League of Cities, so that's why they use 35,000. The primary purpose was really that they want to form a caucus specifically for small cities because they think they're underrepresented, which may or may not be true. I'm honestly not that familiar with the internal politics. And I may bring that up in Council of Communications. So in order for that to take place, there has to be some sort of a vote. The other deal is they did have a lot of really interesting suggestions that other small cities are doing, mostly to deal with revenue issues. But almost all of them required to be a charter city, which, which we are not, which, you know, as it turns out, you're like, oh, that's interesting. And then it turns out, oh, charter city. So those were the two main ones. I did attend a few other ones, but those were the two that I thought were, were most interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Maravelia?
Thank you. I attended the Five Cities Fire Authority on October 20th, so last week on Monday. The main bulk of the meeting was really general business, but we did issue two honorary proclamations honoring our staff, our Five Cities Fire staff, for two recent extraordinary responses that they went on. It was a very emotional part of the meeting. And they absolutely deserved to be honored. I think you can attest to how emotional it was in that room, with the victim there of one of the, one of the incidents. And it was just, I'm very thankful for the staff that we have and their professionalism in those particular times because it's very trying. Other than that, I also went to the Cal Cities, oh, I skipped over Visit Slow Cal, we haven't met yet. I believe that's also next week or the week after. I can't remember. It's on my calendar, though. I also attended the Cal Cities Conference. I attended sessions on community benefits projects, immigration policy, emergency response, and a couple more. And one of the interesting presentations I went to was presented by the city of Malibu on their emergency response to the fires that happened earlier in their year. And they just, it was really a suggestion session of how cities can prepare for these terrible events that might happen within the city. A lot of it was about just communication strategy, and how to have a communication strategy, and really to think about how to have a communication strategy when all of your power is shut down, and all of your internet is shut down, and all that kind of thing, and not necessarily being able to rely on cell service because they had to deal with all that kind of thing during those particular times. And they also stress the importance of staff support during these things because while the main events might be, you know, what we all focus on, the aftermath is actually really the, you know, the, yeah, the traumatic time of trying to deal with everything. And they also stress the importance of having staff participate in mutual aid in other cities as it allows for like real world practice on things. So I thought it was all just very beneficial and just, none of us want to think about these things actually happening, but it's, at least there's some sort of guidelines out there to kind of help us through a little bit with these other cities that have dealt with it. So my takeaways.
Thank you. And Councilmember Lowe?
Thank you. All right.
All right, for the, first on the reports of, of the agencies. Went to a Slow cog, that's the San Luis Obispo Council of Governments. They met on October 1st. And the, the main features there were related to finances and projects. And I may have said this previously, but the Regional Transportation Plan is the, it's, it's the overarching document that identifies transportation needs for a twenty-year period. But it's updated every four years. So the current RTP is from 2023. They're working on the 2027 update. And so the first thing they do is they look at the finances, like what, what's the expected amount of dollars available to meet the transportation needs? And their, their starting, their starting point is that they have about seven million dollars of needs, and this is throughout the county, the whole region. About seven million dollars of needs and maybe about four million dollars of expected revenue. So you see there's quite a, a large gap there. But that's, that's one step. Another step is moving forward into the 2026 Fund Cycle. So once projects are identified in this big plan, then there's funding cycles that are on two-year increments. So they're getting ready for the 2026 Fund Cycle, and Slow cog is identifying how they're going to proceed with major projects considerations. And so I think it's important for, for us to reflect here on how we're, the timing is good because we're updating the general plan, which will include an updated circulation element, and then identify projects for the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan. So the, the city will be participating in that, potentially in also identifying projects that might need to be considered. Whether or not it's for the 26 Fund Cycle or the Out Year Fund Cycles is yet to be seen. But just putting that on everyone's radar. And then, and then the third hearing item was for supplemental funding. Slow cog is considering putting a measure on the ballot for a half-cent sales tax increment that would benefit regional transportation. And they've been doing a lot of workshops out there, and folks have probably heard about that. All right, SLORDA, the Regional Transit Agency, did not meet, whoops, sorry, did not meet in October. The Water Resource Advisory Committee did meet also on October 1st. They, most of the time at that meeting was spent with getting the information about their DSal, the Desalinization Feasibility Study. They've made some progress, and they were sharing a summary of some criteria and some possible locations and things like that. So it's a, it's a, it's a long-term plan. It's a, it's a big look countywide at what may or may not be feasible. I thought it was really interesting. For example, they talked about the criteria that you would need sort of onshore to receive any kind of DSal, and they talked about it being more of a sandy substrate because that's, because they, they can't have a situation where water would be flowing directly from an open water situation into a pipe because that's where fish get, fish and other critters get caught. So it needs to go underground and through a sandy substrate. So for example, for the size and scale that they're looking at to be a regional type effort, the, there is a DSal plant. Folks may be familiar with that at Diablo Canyon, but they said that was an example of a setup. The setting there wouldn't be suitable to scale up because it has that open intake, if you will. So anyway, it was quite interesting. They also had a public outreach session earlier in September. So folks who are interested in that should go to the county's website and, and look that up. So every time that they're developing more information, they're making it available, and I think it's, they're doing a great job. Appreciate that. And I think our, Mr. Robeson, our Assistant, our Public Works Director, is, is part of that team as well, staying on top of that. The Zone Three Water Advisory Board met, but I was, I was out of town, as was our alternate Councilmember Seacrest, so there's no report on that. I would add, of course, I also went to the League of Cities meeting. I'm a loser, though. I forgot my notes. But I did, but I did attend a couple of the sessions that Councilman Guthrie attended, and I was similarly, I came away with similar impressions. I, I also especially was quite impressed by the parking discussion because it gave me a new way of looking at it that I hadn't thought of before. So it, you know, it'd be interesting for us to kind of take that up and say what applies to us here. And, and I also, I think I had a lot of positive impressions from some of the vendors. They have, as you know, at these conferences, they have lots of expos with lots of vendors, and there were quite a few vendors who had some interesting solutions for recreation features that all cost money, but are things that I think our community would, would really enjoy. And, and I know we've talked about some of the needs that we have at some of our existing parks already. And so I was quite inspired by the range of, of, I don't know, opportunity and creativity and thoughtfulness, and all the sharing that goes on at those conferences. So I'll, I hope to bring some more information back at another time. Thank you.
I will add, because I forgot to talk about that. I too was there. So the four of us were here. Councilmember Seacrest was not there, and City Manager Downing was also Cal Cities, as they're calling it now. One of the biggest values there is that it gets you to think outside your box, and that's, that's really the most important things. And all of us attended various sessions together, so sometimes a couple of us were here and a couple of us were there. But I found value in a couple of other things as well. We got a chance to interface with the coastal cities, or the Channel Cities, excuse me, and getting a chance to really form bonds and relationships with our sister cities in a setting where we're all thinking outside the box and thinking regionally. So that, that was, I found very valuable. And I also got the distinct pleasure of being invited to be one of the panelists on one of the, in one of the sessions for basically how to run a civil meeting. So it was really, really fun. It was, there were a lot of questions, and there was a, a standing room only. It was great. I got to do it with the mayor of Elk Grove and the City Manager of Elk Grove as well. So that was really fun to be able to contribute to that after all the time I've been spending up here. So I've never got a chance to be a presenter at League of Cities. Fun. Definitely a value to the city to send us to those conferences, for sure. Now, that takes us to community comments and suggestions. This is item eight on our agenda. This is where you get to come to talk to the council about items that are not on tonight's agenda. Please address the council as one body and confine your comments to sixty seconds or less. And if you would like to comment again on items not on tonight's agenda, now is your chance. So please come forward. And let's, since you have such a short time, let's make sure she sets the timer and all that so we don't waste any time for you.
I just get a minute? Wow. That doesn't allow much citizen participation. Let me just revise my, so I'm here because Royal Grande and Grover Beach Mayors and Oceano Community Services District Presidents make up the Board of Directors of Sanitation District, which is in the process of doing a planning document for the probable relocation of the Sanitation District to a place that's safe from floods and sea level rise. And they will have to be, build a new facility, state-of-the-art, which recycles all municipal water to, that is, will be treated to drinking water standards. This will be about a three-hundred-million-dollar project that the community needs to be aware of and engaged with. And hopefully, our three communities can come together in this because we're on the hook for the three-hundred-million.
And I'll have some information for you when we have public comment closed. Would anyone else like to speak on, it's not on tonight's agenda? All right, we'll turn it over to our city clerk to see if there's anyone online who would like to speak.
There are no members of the public on Zoom.
All right, thank you very much. And so, Mr. Varney, we did receive your letter today, and the City Manager did let us know that the City Managers, OCSD and Sand District are all meeting in the beginning of December regarding this and other topics. So that is on their agenda, and, and they are moving on that in the, in the near future. So thank you for that. All right, so public comments shall be closed, and that brings us to our consent agenda. This is collectively items nine A through nine J. So first of all, I'll ask the council if they have any questions or anything to be pulled for separate action or approval.
I have something to be polled.
Which one?
Item nine D.
Nine D, okay. And? Nine C and nine H. Okay, and Mr. Guthrie? All right, so, so comments, not questions? Okay, so let's take those in order then. So questions for nine C? Thank you.
Oh, thank you, is the budget item. And I had, well, this is more of a, it's, it's a question that was answered, so I'm going to refer back to my notes. I had, so I appreciate the evaluation. This is a budget report, the review of the annual budget. And I had a question about the, about the thirty percent variance on the recreation piece. And I received information back explaining, so I just asked for a little, a little bit of an explainer on that because some of the other variances were included in the, in the report, but not this one. And so the information that I received was that the expenditures are about thirty percent higher than budgeted, but it was mainly due to offering more classes and community events, which led to higher participation. And then this also was offset by, a revenue increase by about twenty-three percent for the same reason. So there was a, a pretty good offset there. So it was, there's, there's the question and the answer basically there for you.
Appreciate that. Nine D?
And that was the item I wanted polled for separate consideration.
And nine H, is that common? Or so for after-public comment?
Sorry, nine H is a comment.
All right, then we will go ahead right now at this time and open up public comment. This is for items nine A through nine I, excuse me, I should, I said H before, I think. Through nine I. So if you'd like to comment on those items, anything starting, starting with the number nine, please come forward now. All right, seeing no one will check in online?
There are no members of the public on Zoom.
All right, so we'll bring this back to the council. So why don't we turn it over to Councilmember Lowe for comments before we take items nine A through I, but minus nine D?
All right, this is comments on nine H. Right, okay. So this is the, the temporary use permit for the Wine and Beer Festival, which I, I want to first say, I want to say thank you to Cheers Royal Grande for bringing events and working with the Village of Halloween event, and, and this event, both, I think are great, great events. I, again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna couch this as me being a newish council member. And, and I was, it's interesting to me that we're waiving a, a small fee. And I, I'm, I guess this could have been a question, sorry for this. It, it, it seems that this, the fee might even be about the same cost as it is to put an item on the council's agenda. I'm not sure if that's the only reason for bringing that permit to the, the council or not, was for the fee waiver or not. But what I'm, what I'm interested in is if, if there are opportunities coming forward in the future as part of regular business, if we could have considered some of the event-related fees, use, user fees and things like that, reflecting on the, the budget, like for recreation. I know this is a little bit of apples and oranges. I know that recreation and Public Works work closely together on parks. But we do have user fees for some of the groups like pickleball. But I don't know, you know, what the user fees are for some of the other parks and events and strategies like that. So I was just hoping that maybe we could, as a, as a body at some point, have a, have an evaluation of some of the, how we're looking at the events and just making sure that we're being equitable, and if there are opportunities to recover some of the costs that we are incurring with the events, that we have a reasonable way of doing that, too. That's my comment.
Brian, since you handle both ends of that, perhaps you could take that as, as the question. I think that it, it ended up being, which is sort of, if you could kind of separate the difference into our, our fee study that we do now and then, and then also the temporary use permits. So if you want to handle that and kind of untangle that, that would be helpful, I think.
You bet. The, Brian Pedradie, Community Development Director, there is the, there is the temporary use permit fee, which is the one that's requested being waived. There are user fees for the park which are being paid, so those are separate. And so that's, that's kind of how the fee structure is done with, with these types of uses. Just quickly on your question about the, the, the need for the temporary use permit, that's because of the alcohol sales at the park. So that, that triggered the temporary use permit.
And when is the next time we have a, a fee study coming forward? That's been a while, I think.
Dr. Valentine is on Zoom, so I'll wait for her to unmute herself.
Thank you, council. We completed our last study in 2022, so we will likely undertake that process in in calendar year 2026, for your council in 2027, every five years.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right, any other comments? All right, so would anyone like to make a motion on nine A through I minus nine D?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lowe? Councilmember Marvilia?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russel.
Yes. And then item nine D, do you have comments?
I kind of have both. I spoke to Mr. Robeson earlier about this item. I have a lot of questions that I would like to see. I understand that this is, at this point, is only an intention to adopt an ordinance granting the franchise to Phillips 66. I would like to see the recent inspections on the pipeline. I have a lot of questions on what they're doing in terms of inspecting these pipelines. What is the integrity of it? What is the age of material of these pipelines? What systems are in place to detect leaks or ruptures? Coordination that exists if there, a leak is detected? If there has been any historical leakage in the last ten years, or any signs of it, like pressure drops or anything like that, if they have the systems in place? If risk assessments have been conducted within, you know, just this, I, I'm not comfortable re-upping this contract without knowing any of the safety information involved, especially with looking at how this pipeline runs through our city. It's, it's a pretty significant portion of the city. And I'm just not comfortable moving forward without knowing any of that information. I don't know if Mr. Robeson wants to comment on any more of that.
Sure. So thank you for your question. Those are good questions. And what we're finding is there are annual reports that Phillips 66 has submitted. They submitted them today. The Office of the State Fire Marshal oversees all of the inspection and testing inside the state, and they coordinate with Phillips 66 annually to, to do those inspections and tests. They produce a report. And we have, we're, we're in possession of those, although what we would like to do is coordinate with the Office of the State Fire Marshal to make sure that we're dealing with them directly as a third party and getting compliance feedback from them. And we will incorporate that information into our next staff report to show kind of the multi-layer methodology that's used to do the testing and inspection, not only by the Office of the State Fire Marshal, but Phillips 66 themselves. So we're, we're going to incorporate those, those reports so we can show that the system is safe and tested and inspected throughout the year.
I have a follow-up question to that, because that just wasn't on my radar. To me, this was just renewing something we already do. Can you just sort of, for the public who might now have their ears perked up, including myself, remind us kind of a little of the basics here so that people don't, I guess, so that they can be informed and understand exactly what we're doing here?
Sure. We renew this, the franchise agreement with Phillips 66. And it's a really a protection for the city so that we have a document that is approved by the city that shows that Phillips 66 is responsible for any types of maintenance to the, to that system or leaks or, you know, the things that we're talking about, the safety issues. I think to layer upon that, Councilmember Marvilia is asking for some evidence and just corroboration on how that reporting and inspection works. And there are documents that substantiate that. And we want to have those so that your council can use those to make the best decision.
So I remember years ago, we, we looked at this. And in fact, I was suggesting that we would use these pipes to deliver recycled water because they were unused.
Right.
And so I'm wondering with Phillips 66 closed, are any of, are any of these pipes actually used to?
Well, I think some of them are used in a general pipe network. The petroleum that's actually going to the refinery or the pipelines, sorry, that are going to the refinery are not being used. But there are, there is a, a system of piping that is more kind of connected to the interstate petroleum industry. And that is connected to this piping system that goes through our city. So we, we just want to make sure that they're safe and inspected and that in the event of some kind of damage to the piping system, that the city is not responsible for doing the maintenance on that. It's going to be Phillips 66 that would bear the cost and the maintenance responsibility.
And if we did at some point say we're not going to renew the franchise, would we be telling them they have to take the pipes out?
You know, that's a good question. I, I don't think so, although there would be some kind of maintenance on the pipes, either fill them or remove them. But that's something that we could look into as far as, you know, if the pipes would have to be removed from the street.
I'll just say, when we looked at it before, they said we could have the pipe if we would take the whole pipe, but they didn't even know where it went. So we couldn't very well take, take the whole pipe.
We were talking about, yeah, I remember that.
Yeah. And so it turned out that it was probably not a good idea because just cleaning the pipe would have been ridiculous, let alone taking responsibility for the rest of it. But that's why I'm surprised they're using it at this point, but, okay.
I, I think they're reserving the right into the future. They're, they're closed, but they're still operational in a corporate sense, but they're not using these pipes for a petroleum distribution. But they want to make sure, and we want to make sure that if there's some kind of breakage, that Phillips 66 is responsible for the, for the repair.
I will add, one of those pipes goes right up Pal Seon, which we're looking at some significant work on in the future. And so this might actually be a good time to at least get that part done. Yeah, I don't know, we're working on grand, but we are working on Pal Seon, yeah.
Yeah, normally those pipes are deep. We identify them in the horizon of the, of the street. And we can normally avoid those when we're doing sewer or water electrical work.
I'm just saying approval.
And roundabouts.
Now would be a good time.
Is this going to fall under, just been a long time since we've talked about this. It's going to fall under similar, I don't want to say hand tying, but much like the telecommunications ordinances. And Isaac, I see you jumping up as.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and to a question from Councilmember Guthrie. So the CPUC here does have exclusive jurisdiction over that aspect. So there are some limitations associated with a process of abandonment and what that would mean to remove the pipes. And so city has some limited jurisdiction, not unlike the telecom regulations where there's some preemption in both under state and federal law.
I was just going to ask about tonight's action. It, it, it sounds to me, if this is accurate, that tonight's action allows for this negotiation to occur. But it doesn't, it's not binding on us to agree to anything. Is that accurate?
That is correct, Councilmember Lowe. So the resolution of intention tonight would set a protest hearing slash public hearing because the franchise is an ordinance and is attached to the resolution. So tonight's action doesn't bind the council on the franchise. It initiates this step to move forward and hold that public hearing on the, on the franchise.
Just jumping in, I think my intention of pulling this was to note of the items that I wanted to see specifically for the council before we have that public hearing.
All right, so staff, do you have enough direction, understanding what the council wants to see ahead of that, that next step?
Yes.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Marvilia?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russel?
Yes. Right. Fast forwarding, oh my gosh, you can't fast forward that way. Yes, thank you. Item 10 is amendments to Title 8 and 15 of the Aurora Grande Municipal Code by adopting by reference the 2025 California Building Standard Code and Uniform Code. And I don't see a staff member here, but I do see our Community Development Director. So Mr. Pedradie, is this one yours?
Yes, all me.
All right.
Brian Pedradie, Community Development Director. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This item tonight is the amendments to Title 8 and 15 regarding the 2025 California Building Standard Code and Uniform Code. I'll give a short presentation. And we also have our building official, Mark Sadowski, in the audience, here to help answer questions. And we also have Chief Scott Hallett on Zoom to answer questions in that realm as well. So the state mandates that building and construction codes are updated every three years. And the California Code of Regulations, which is Title 24, AKA the California Building Standards Code, is made up of multiple parts. And this year includes new Part 7, which is the WUI or Wildland Urban Interface Code. The city adopts these codes by reference and allows local amendments. So speaking of these local amendments, the governor signed AB 130 in June of 2025, which limits local jurisdictions' ability to make local amendments regarding residential building standards for the next six years. And this is to continue to help address the state's housing crisis. The exception is that home hardening for fire resistivity, thank you, is allowed. And our local amendments have been reviewed and are consistent with AB 130. And here are just some of the general areas of local changes. And they're general updates in the Building and Residential Code, the Fire Code, and our Property Maintenance Code. So most state changes are minor, save again for the new Wildland Urban Interface. It includes the reference to the fire severity maps, some administrative amendments, and clarification of some fire sprinkler requirements. The WUI code, for the WUI code itself, the intention is to reduce ignition of buildings due to flames or burning embers, focusing on high and very high severity zones as dictated by the state. This includes ignition-resistant exterior materials, fire-resistant roofs, and ember-resistant openings into the attic and vents. The city has no very high severity zone, but high exists to the north and east. And staff's recommendation is to introduce the ordinance amending the provisions in Titles 8 and 15 of the Municipal Code and adopting by reference the 2025 California Building Standards Code, set the public hearing for November 25th regarding the proposed ordinance and find that it is exempt from CEQA.
Thank you very much. Let's, whoa, let's see if the council asks questions.
So I think you answered my first one. I just want clarification. If in the future we wanted to change some of these requirements, are, are any of these, like, set as minimum requirements to state? Are, are there any of these that we wouldn't be allowed to change in the future?
I don't believe so. I think all of these would still be allowed to be changed in, into the future at, at any time, really.
Okay.
We do, this is the tri, I guess it's a tri-annual, tri-annual, it's every three years.
All right, so this isn't like an ADU rule where they, that we can only be, we can only exceed their requirement. We, we, we can't do less than their requirement.
Correct.
Okay. So, for example, we've, we've had the fire sprinkler rules for a long time. Is this aligning our fire sprinkler rule with what the state is suggesting? Or is this us just fixing our own?
This is mostly fixing our own. I do have Chief Hallett on the line if there's details about that particular section that you'd like to.
And then I did have one, and this is based on, on some observations, you know, bicycling around, you notice a lot more. And, and this has to do with the 200-foot driveway rule. Is that, so is that a local requirement or is that a state? And I'll just clarify, called 200-foot driveway rule, where we're going to require a, some sort of a hammerhead turnaround of some sort.
Correct. The 200-foot driveway length would have a, anything over 200 feet would have a hammerhead and a turnaround. And that is a local amendment.
Okay. So, so that's from the city? Because my, my observation is, is that we seem to have this rule, but for instance, Grover Beach, same fire department does not.
My understanding from the fire chief is that they do have the same.
They have the same role?
Requirement, yes.
Okay. All right, those were my questions, thank you.
Quick question on the Wild Urban Interface. Can you describe what's, what's new about that? I assume it's fuel reduction. Does it have to do with better access or more egress points, things like that?
I believe it has mostly to do with hardening of structures. So mentioned, like, ignition-resistant exterior materials, sort of the venting along attics and openings that would allow embers to get in. So ember-resistant construction as well. I think that's the main, that's the main focus of the, of the Chapter 7A.
I think windows are a part of that as well.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Okay, we'll open up public comment on item 10A. Does anyone have comment to make on this item? All right, seeing no one in chambers, we'll check in online.
There are no members of the public on Zoom.
All right, then we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. And would anyone like to make a triple-sided motion?
I'll move we introduce an ordinance amending provisions in Title 8 and 15 of the Aurora Grande Municipal Code and adopting reference to 2025 California Building Standards. We'll set a public hearing for November 25th regarding the proposed ordinance. And we find the ordinance is exempt from CEQA.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Marvilia?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russel?
Yes. That takes us to item 11. We do not have business items tonight. Item 12, Council Communications. Does anyone have communications this evening, sir?
Yeah, so based on my other comments about the, what I'll call the League of Cities Small City Caucus, I wonder if we could, I, I think it's, actually, we have to formally say that we want to have it, have it, have it approved. They do require, I think, 25%. So I know that would have to come back as at least a consent, but maybe we could have staff look at whether, what would be the pros and cons of doing that and, and maybe go ahead and take action to, to allow that to take place.
I would second that. Do we have a third?
I'll third that.
All right, staff, is that good enough for you to move forward? Okay. Any other items on council communications? All right, then that takes us to item 13, adjournment. So have a very safe and happy Halloween, everyone. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.